...in commission meeting of November 19th, 2015. Let the record show that all the commissioners are present as well as staff. And at this point, I would like for you to join me with me for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Are there any agenda changes?
No, they're not.
Okay. Next, we have our public comment period. If there's someone present this morning that would like to address the commission on an item, land use item, that is not on our agenda, that would be your opportunity. Okay. Oh, go ahead. Sure.
I'm Bill McManus, Calaveras Project. I don't seem to have the access to the print media that some people do, but I wanted to make my thoughts known to the commission in person. And I'm referencing an article that was in the paper a week or so ago, considering the future of sprawl before us. And I'd like to comment on this article because I think it's very misleading and it portrays Calaveras County in a very poor light. First of all, the definition of sprawl, as it applies here, is not the only definition of sprawl. Some of us think that planned communities that creep out like amoebas from the center of cities are urban sprawl. Where I prefer to think of our county as a more pastoral scene with open property, homes, families, horses, kids working on 4-H projects, so forth and so on. I agree with Commissioner Muterte's in that if people want to build that type of life for themselves, and they pay for it and they're responsible for it, they should be allowed to do that. That's not sprawl. That's creating a lifestyle that brought you to Calaveras County from a location that has sprawl, real sprawl, concrete sprawl, asphalt sprawl. Also, to go on in the article, almost an accusation was made that this board presented a gift to a developer. And that gift was assumed to be, or a number was picked out of the air of a million dollars. First of all, that's unprovable. Second of all, the very notion of it being a gift is wrong. You know, was it justice? Was it incentive? Or was it just doing the right thing? As we continue on through the article, and I understand to skip through most of it is kind of hard to get through, an accusation was made that the commissioners on this planning commission are beholden to the supervisors that appointed them. After appearing at many commission meetings and board meetings, I can assure you that that is probably not the case. In fact, I think it's probably closer to the idea that you all belong to the same vast majority that is probably in opposition to a very vocal but very small minority. That doesn't mean there's collusion. That doesn't mean you're beholding. That just means you're of like mind. In particular, while I don't know many of you very well, I do know one commission member fairly, I have known him for several years, many years, and that's Mr. Toono. The charges that were made against Mr. Toono were outrageous. Mr. Toono has been thoughtful and deliberate in all of his activities in this county dating back to the days where he saved countless homeowners, the necessity to get flood insurance when the FEMA maps were discovered to be out of date. I know that the work on that was tireless and long and benefited a lot of people in this county. I also worked with Mr. Toono the last time we did this exercise on the general plan. He's absolutely right. The Mitter-Harnish Plan is garbage. Not only should it be hidden, it should be destroyed. We fought long and hard against that because it didn't represent the values of vast majority of people in Calaveras County. And I don't think he should be held up to criticism and innuendo that somehow he's not doing the right thing. All of you have done the right thing. This has been one of the best planning commissions I've ever seen since I've lived here. Every single one of you does heavy lifting for the board supervisors. The planning department, under the direction of Mr. Maurer, is an excellent department. While we may not agree on everything, everyone is polite, you get what you need, you get what you ask for, and I don't know how you could ask for anything more than that. So, in closing, I'd just like to say that if people want planned communities, want to be stacked one on top of each other, want more asphalt, want more concrete, want more regulations, they're not going to come to Calaveras County. They'll stay where they have that already, which is San Jose, Stockton, and Modesto. And I would just like to thank each and every one of the planning commissioners, the staff, Mr. Maurer and his staff, for the excellent job that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Peter Race from Generalin. I'd like to say ditto, put a speech before me. I appreciate what you folks are doing. It can be a pain in the rear sometimes. I don't know if it's really, it must be frustrating, but I want to thank you folks. I admire you folks because you do have the patience and the stamina to stick with it. I don't have it. So, I do appreciate what you folks are doing. I do have one question on the last meeting, about a couple of weeks, there was an issue concerning, and I'm glad it's not on the agenda, concerning pollution for the night sky. And I don't think much of it. Hey, that's great, beautiful. But then, the look at it, more I look at it, there's no specification. What is a bright light? What is not a bright light? What light is that's a reflection? Because some people have a light facing down, but their house is white, that reflects quite a better area. I'm an early riser. I get up around four o'clock. I'm a sick puppy along that line. And I do appreciate the night sky. But when I look from my house, I look north, I see a orange cloud. And thank God, it's not a fire, but it is Valley Spring. And you know what? It's good to know there's civilization out there. If that's pollution, I love it. If that's pollution, when I see those radio towers for aircraft and different communication towers, and they bring back and forth, I do not consider that a pollution. But it is blinking, and that's total darkness. So, what I read, what little word I comprehend, it's not very specific. I'd love to know how and when it's going to be enforced. Who's going to enforce it? Because my neighbors has a light above their door or their barn, and it's 10 feet high, and it reflects off the white pane. Are you considering that pollution? And also, talking to some of the folks in the law enforcement, some of the folks are great. They come home at dark, and they leave at dark. They make a living. But the ideal, that you're only going to have light on a sidewalk where you're walking. Some of those people are ladies, not exactly aggressive type maybe, or competitive style like some people I see in the mirror once in a while. What about safety? How are you going to see if somebody's hiding behind those bushes? Has anybody thought about checking with law enforcement? What is a good, safe way to have your residents kept safe? Is that when you walk down on the sidewalk, there may be some bushes or trees or whatever? We had problems with squatters in my district, fifth district, people moving in next door and so on. And there was quite a bit of problem, theft, burglaries, et cetera. I'll tell you something. When I walk toward my front door, it doesn't bother me that much, I got a couple of dogs that will do damage, but a lot of folks, they're walking toward their door, and they don't know what's hiding under little bushes or that tree. They only see what they're stepping. I would encourage those folks to do pollute the air for their safety when they come and go in the dark. So, it's just a comment, it's an observation. I'm sure the great minds on this bench will come up with a, where is your pollution is? What is that pollution is? When the moon up shining and shining all over, is that a pollution? So, anyway, if you go a little bit further than I just, hey, I don't want to pollute the air, that sounds great, I'm all for it.
Mr. Race, you've got a minute left.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But something that you might want to consider down the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And yes, I like the way you guys are working. I really appreciate it. At least you folks are not employees of any state agency like Caltrans. Let me tell you, folks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Colleen Platt with MyValleySprings.com. Just in response to some of the concerns about light pollution and light control, over the many, many years we've been talking about this at the planning commission, in the first place, I believe that any ordinances were aimed towards new construction, not existing residences and existing lighting. So, I'm pretty sure that, you know, any ordinances that would be coming down the road would be focused on new construction, at least that was my understanding. And then the second thing on safety that the gentleman brought up, we did meet with Captain Macedo years ago and discussed this issue about lighting and safety at nighttime. And his opinion was that some of those lights that came on with sensors, that movement triggered the lights turning on versus having the light just shining on all night long, excuse me, night long, was actually a better safety measure than having a floodlight glaring all night long and actually blinding you in the face when you're walking into the shadows. So, his opinion was that those lights that came on with movement and sensors were actually quite a good safety measure to have. So, just some response to that. Thank you.
Good morning. Lou Mayhew. I wanted to just comment that contrary to some earlier comments, that the opportunity for a rural lifestyle is not in jeopardy. That's a false choice that was presented. There is an adequate supply of lands subdivided to accommodate that. If anything, the, there should be reasonable barriers to further subdivide large parcels. That's the issue. So, it's, a false choice was presented to you a little while ago, and that's what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. Marty Crane. It seems like every time we turn around, someone is talking about Mitter-Harnish and that report, that quote crap, that trash. And it has not been released. No one's read it. How can we judge something that, I'm one of the taxpayers that, that my, I was part of the $900,000 that went to pay for that. I would like to read it. And for us to judge something that we haven't even read is irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. We are moving on to the agenda, which there is none, then our public hearings. And the first is 2015-029D, appealed by Ford Construction and CBS Asphalt. So, I guess I'll turn that over to you, Peter?
Yes.
And in advance, Peter's got a toothache today, so he's in a little pain. He's going to the dentist later.
Thank you. So, again, there is a request to continue this item. Environmental management did receive information from CBS Asphalt a short while ago, quite a bit of information. They have not had a chance to fully review it yet, and the applicant has agreed to allow more time to continue that review so that we can, environmental health can review it and get their report back to you in a timely manner. So, we're requesting that we continue to December 10th.
And do I, I understand from Mr. Betzer's letter to all of us that his report, his response will be available to us at the time of the, when the, when the agenda gets to us?
Yes, the intent is to have that available before-
Yeah, he'll have a presentation, but we'll see the report in advance.
Yes.
Any other questions to Peter at this time? There are members of the public that would like to provide some information about this continuance request? No? All right. So, I'll bring it back to the commission for action regarding the continuance to December 10th.
I will move that we continue the item until December 10th.
Moved in second, and all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Continue to the 10th. Next up is the continued discussion of the draft general plan, and our agenda this morning includes the resource production element. So, again, Peter, do you want to?
Yeah.
Any background for us?
Sure.
Set the stage?
Okay, well, this is the next element that we will be discussing, the resource production element, also referred to as the ag, forestry and mining element, is an optional element. It's not one of the mandated ones, but because of the importance of resources in this county, it was decided previously that it would be important to have this as a separate, separate element. I addressed this a little differently than previously, and I hope, hopefully this works for you. Where changes were made, I annotated that within the body of the document itself, and I hope that worked for you guys as far as a way to, you know, for me to clarify why this change is being made, you know, where it may have come from, those kinds of things. So, if that works as we go through this, let me know. If it doesn't work, we'll go back to, discuss some other means of, you know, sort of trying to convey that information to you. It's broken down into different sections focusing, you know, one, generally on resources in general, then we get agriculture, timber, mining, and geothermal resources, which we do have some in the county, although there, we have, it's small and it's not being utilized at all right now. But there is potential for geothermal, and it's something that the state does say we should, to look at as a part of the general plan. I have tried to work closely with the agricultural coalition. We've met several times to review, you know, there was a draft element that was prepared by that organization. I took that and tried to incorporate as much as I felt was appropriate in this version. We then worked, you know, we met and worked with them and sort of walked through each of the concerns they had. And hopefully, I've captured their concerns in these revisions. There is one edit I would like to make on page two in the second paragraph. There is a line that says, although total farmland has declined by approximately 18% since 1999-
Page two?
Page two. Second paragraph, it's sort of the end of the first sentence. This was something that we discussed with the background report, and it really hasn't declined. It was a accounting procedure that previously, the former ag commissioner, I think it was Jerry Howard was his name, had one method of calculating how much acreage was in the Williamson Act or under production. And that changed in just sort of the manner in which that reporting was done in 1999. So, it actually wasn't a decrease. It wasn't suddenly 18,000 acres was gone, just the way it was reported, the way it was calculated was changed. In reality, land and production has been relatively stable, and it's sort of fluctuated over the years, but it has been relatively stable. So, I would just recommend that we strike that last phrase, that first sentence. We did receive a letter from-
Well, on that point, would it be appropriate to, to replace it with the fact of the relative stability over this period of time?
I don't know that it's necessary. We certainly could if we felt like it was appropriate, but I don't know that it's necessary.
Where do you want to start the strikeout from?
Although.
I'll just finish the sentence with walnuts. We also received a comment letter from Cedric Twight, representing Sierra Pacific Industries. I'm sure he's, I see he's here in the audience, and he'll probably provide his comments on it as we go through. So, I think some of the issues brought up in the report, and particularly about the county review of harvest plans, and it's really sort of a, I raised the question to you as whether or not you think it's appropriate to even have a policy relating to that, and I think we'll discuss that further. So, other than that, unless you have any specific questions of me, I guess we could dive into the document.
In your, your comments to us, you mentioned that the Board of Supervisors desired the resource production.
Yes.
I took it to mean the current, the current board.
Well, it was a previous board, but there has been no change in direction. You know, when we, when we met back in, in June, the joint meeting-
Yeah.
You know, this was a part of the plan at that point in time. There was clearly no direction to modify it. So, I, I would, my understanding is the current board agrees with prior decisions that this should be included.
Okay, but, and I agree with it too, because we're a rural county, so I think it's appropriate. The caveat is that I think it, it needs to, in a way, justify its existence in the, in our general plan, and not, not by saying, which I think it does a few times, we will abide by state law here, we will abide by state law there. Where we as a county want to, want to add something to the, to the, to the mix, some special arrangements, some special considerations, some programs to enhance and promote, and those kinds of things that are within the county's authority, then that's where I think, that's what I think the resource production element should be limited to. And I don't think we need to repeat where, to include aspects of it that are strictly state law, we're going to comply with it, any more than the circulation element should say, we're going to comply, our speed limit signs are going to comply with state law. I liken it to that. So, where it could be trimmed down, I think it's along those lines, and, and the document from Sierra Pacific outlines some specific places that, with respect to forestry, where that can be done.
Any other specific questions to Peter? So, shall we dive in? All right. So, starting with the introduction, any specific comments?
Yes, on introduction, hang on. What do we mean by inaccessibility of the ag and timber and mining? Quote, "As a result of inadequate information during the land use decision-making process." I'm just unclear as to what was meant by that.
Where are you reading that?
There, in the introduction.
Let's see. You know, I have to make this comment. My, my notes are all based on 214 draft, and where you've changed it sometimes in your, you know, in your current draft, I sometimes pick up on that and sometimes don't. But in the, let's see. Yeah. Where, it begins with "will not become inaccessible." First sentence of the introduction. Will not become inaccessible, we're trying to prevent inaccessibility as a result of inadequate information during the land use decision-making process.
Right. So, maybe inaccessible is not the best word to use, but the, the point is that, the purpose of this element is to ensure that we consider the importance of agricultural land, timberland, and our mineral resources when we make land use decisions. And so, that by having this information, it assists us in those determinations when a project comes forward and there are impacts associated with the project to agricultural And so, by providing that information both here as well as in the background report, it helps us frame our decision-making process vis a vis urban development and its impact on resources.
The concept, I understand it as verbalized that way. This didn't tell me that.
No, I know. I had a problem with that as well. When I was looking at it, I was thinking, let's see, the, saying something, I mean, I don't think we really need that, saying something like, agriculture, timber, and mineral resources are key assets to the county's economic health. The resource production element provides policies and implementation measures to protect and enhance their value. And then just go, and then start, the next sentence would be agriculture, timber, and mineral resources related to wildlife aesthetics, recreation, watershed protection, or other beneficial purposes are described in the conservation and open space element.
Could you give me that one again, please, Fawn? You're replacing the first sentence with, with a new draft?
Yes.
Say that again, please.
So, it would just start agriculture, timber, and mineral resources are key assets to the county's economic health. The resource production element provides policies and implementation measures to protect and enhance their value. And then the second sentence would be agriculture, timber, and mineral resources related to wildlife aesthetics, recreation, watershed protection, or other beneficial purposes are described in the conservation and open space element.
Okay, you keep the second sentence, and you replace the first one with your draft?
Except, I would take out that may be related. I mean, that might, that may be, and just-
Oh. I, I like Fawn's first sentence.
Me too.
I do too.
Gets to the point, much in the way that you describe it.
All right. Sounds good.
Do we have that down?
Well, I can certainly, I could certainly give it to Peter. Yes.
Okay.
So, that's pretty much for introduction. Organization, I don't know that there needs to be discussion, that just lists the contents.
Hang on a second.
So, moving to background and setting associated plans and documents. I had one. Well, we've got Peter's edit on the second paragraph, and then on the third paragraph, where it says, "The Wine Grape Alliance," I think that should be just attract instead of attracts, the Wine Grape Alliance attract visitors to the, I don't know. Not a plural.
You are correct.
Yeah. The other item I had here was where the statement, "There are no state-designated prime, unique, or other important farmlands in Calaveras County," and then it has a footnote that the fact that, that we don't have any is because we don't know if we have any. So, it seems really kind of misleading in a way. I mean, it's saying we don't have something, but it doesn't really say, unless you read the footnote, is that we don't have any because we haven't been mapped. So, I would propose that language- So I would propose that language, something like-
I'm sorry, Fawn, give me the sentence you're on.
It's, "There are no state design-"
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. And then it refers to a footnote that says that we don't have any because we don't know. Instead, if we said, "The California," using the footnote, "Say, the California Department of Conservation's Farmland Mapping and Monitoring Program, FMMP, identifies state-designated prime, unique, or other important farmlands." And then the, trying to follow my own notes here, oh, and then just go, "Calaveras County and other foothill counties are not included in the FNMP, so the presence of primary, unique farmlands is unknown."
That would all be in the text, correct?
Yes, no footnote.
Good.
I like that.
I think that's a very good change, and actually, I was in the process of updating the technical background report, apparently there is prime land, because the report that was issued in 2013 by Department of Conservation shows that there is prime farmland, so I'm not sure where that line came from.
Okay.
Okay, so the second-
So I think this is appropriate edit, and-
So that would affect the language that Fawn proposes, to the effect that we're not included because, along with other counties. So there'll be some caveat to that, right? That we are included-
With the background report, what Peter's saying is that we may actually have some identified prime farmland.
Yeah, and I think that there may be portions of the county that's been mapped, but not the entire county, and I think that's what this point is getting at, is that, yes, we do have prime farmland, it just hasn't been fully mapped, and I think that's one of the implementation measures that we get to, we would like to have the, have the state finish mapping, so we do know what's out there.
What am I missing here, where, it doesn't say we don't have any, it just says that we don't have any designated by state.
So there'd be a qualifier in there, to the extent that we do have some mapping done?
Well, the, the state is who identifies, whether it's prime or non-prime, or local importance, there's a hierarchy of different types of farmland, and the state makes that determination, as part of its categorization and the implementation of the Williamson Act.
And, and this-
So I think by striking that line-
It just says, "We don't have any," that the state designated.
Yeah, I, I think that Fawn's suggested edits are more accurate-
Yeah.
And they, you know, because, in fact, we do have prime farmland, just discovered it last week, so. I would, I would support Fawn's recommended change.
I support Fawn's recommendation, but my understanding is that, that maybe-
That there could be a further, yes.
-some qualifier, to the extent that there's, there's been mapping done, and maybe you can just slug that in.
Okay.
Were there any other comments on this section?
I don't have any on that page.
No? We moving on to timber resources?
Where did you jump to?
Timber resources.
No, none for me on that page.
Nothing on timber resources?
Yep.
My only question here was, in, on the second paragraph, you know, that we just had this butte fire, it says, "Timber activity near term is expected to decline as fires in nearby counties now require the salvage of damaged trees. Longer-term timber harvest should mirror the economy." I mean, is, are our own butte fire impact this statement at all, as far as availability or timber harvesting?
I think it's too early to tell, and it may be that as we finalize the plan next year, we'll know more information, and we can tweak the language during the final edits to it, but I think at this point in time, I don't really know how that would, how it would affect us. Much of the area that burned wasn't necessarily timberland. Some of the other fires that hit in, say, Eldorado County, Utopia County, much more up into the Coniferous Forest area where there is timber. Much of the area that burned, well, not all of it, was more of the oak woodland area in Chaparral. And so, how it affects timber production is really split, I don't know.
I had a question on the second paragraph, that starts in Calaveras County. So, actually, the last sentence says, "As mineral resources are depleted, however, there is an increased likelihood of future designation statewide." Two, two questions on that, is mineral resources are depleted, like elsewhere? Like elsewhere in the state, or elsewhere in the nation, or internationally, or they're just, I mean, elsewhere other than the county? There's an increased likelihood of future designation statewide. Statewide of, that they're important mineral reserves, or, and, or future designation statewide that might include Calaveras County? I don't know, it just seems very, a lot of generalities here.
Here's what I think it says, it says that, as far as the state's concerned, we don't have any significant areas right now, but as the other areas that are significant get depleted, ours rises in importance proportionally.
That's kind of how I was reading it.
Is that how it reads?
Yes, that's what it's intended to say.
So, maybe if we said something, you know, closer to that, because even if other resources are, other important resources are depleted-
You say elsewhere in the state?
Elsewhere in the state, or something, there's an increased likelihood of future designation statewide, but a future designation statewide still isn't as significant to us unless we become a future significant designation, isn't that, isn't that the point? That we may become more valuable as the other areas are depleted?
Well, again, this is trying to focus on Calaveras County, so what happens in other counties in the future probably, you know, are not that.
Right.
I would say, resources are depleted elsewhere in the state, there's increased likelihood of future designations, period.
Yeah, that would be good, right, because them being designated elsewhere, it's like, wow, good for them, yeah.
Yeah.
One of the, one of the things that I have often felt and argued, that this county is somewhat remiss by not having a mining, or a right to mine ordinance, similar to the right to farm ordinance, so people don't build a house next to an open tip, and then complain when somebody starts to blast, you know? It's like a lot of this, there's a lot of similarity between the right to mine and the right to farm.
Yeah, I think that's something we can certainly discuss as we get into the policies and policies of mineral resources. You know, I know that there are other jurisdictions that have created buffering requirements around existing mines, or in areas where there are mineral resource identified, mineral designations, that, you know, in parcel sizes, or setback requirements, you know, some type of protections for that, you know, the ability to extract that mineral resource have been implemented elsewhere, and we can certainly incorporate someone like that, if that's the desire of the commission.
All right, geothermal resources?
Has anything changed on that one, Peter, because you had mentioned that there's a couple of geothermals, and this just references one?
Well, just the one that I'm aware of. If I said a couple, I meant one.
All right, so that, zip through that, sort of the background setting section, do we want to invite public comment now? Before we move on? Okay. So at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to discuss what we've just discussed, which is really sort of the introduction and the background of the resource production element, now would be your time.
I just have a couple points of clarification. First one is, when we were talking about prime land versus non-prime land, as far as the Williamson Act goes, we do have prime land in our county, and that would be any of our walnuts and grapes. They would be, they're considered prime land, and they're mapped as prime land, at least on our maps. Because the state hasn't done their mapping of our county, they may have a, a different definition, but as far as we're concerned, we do have prime land in Calaveras County. The other thing, the impact of the butte fire, there might not be anything to really change there, because economically, the situation of lumber is a world commodity, and the rim fire and the butte fire, both effects are about the same, but it is kind of a large, it can't say that it's a, an insignificant impact on our economy. Even though there wasn't very many timber preserve properties in the burn, there was probably about four thousand acres that was considered timberland, and maybe twenty million board feet of timber is the figure that's been estimated. And, you know, the price on the timber has already been impacted because of the rim fire, so they, the, the industry's been taking land from the rim fire, and now they have another excess lumber coming from our fire, plus any other fires around, so the price per board foot of this damaged wood is, might be worth about the cost of taking it out. But still, it's a large impact in a normal, if it was a normal situation, and we hadn't had these fires, many of the people who did have these timber holdings in our county were counting on that, that timber for their, for their retirement, or for some future harvest. So, long-term, I would say, for the private people in the county who did have those, that timber was significant, it may not change our plan much, but those people will have to, if they're interested, and I think many of them are, you know, start over and replant trees, which would take another forty years for them to see any economic benefit from that. So I just wanted to kind of fill in a little bit.
Can you stick around for a second?
Yeah.
On the mapping of the prime land, you have, you have your own maps that, that show where we have prime land defined by those two crops.
Yeah.
And if the state were to do its mapping, it would show the same lands, correct?
That's right.
So, going back to the, the portion that we were discussing before, with that, with respect to that footnote, I think Kevin's comments, is it Kevin, right?
Yes.
Are well-taken, that we ought to include something to that effect, to qualify this, this so-called lack of mapping from the state is one thing, but we, you know, we have resources, we have information resources that do designate, I think-
Yeah.
I, I can't think of the words right now, but you understand, I think we ought to include that.
Yeah, and the state, the, the conservation people in the state who kind of oversee the Williamson Act, they know that we do have prime land. They know that also, they just haven't produced a map of our county.
Yeah.
The mapping that you're referring to, is that something that you have, or is that something our county has a record of, that we-
County has a record of.
So why don't we address the fact that our county has identified prime lands?
I can work with Kevin to come up with some clarifying language on that.
Is that an, an attachment that we should have to our background report?
I wouldn't hurt.
Our mapping department can easily produce a map.
I mean, that's where, that's what background report's supposed to be, it's supposed to be all the data that we have available, and-
I agree.
I think we ought to stick that in there.
I agree.
With respect to the timber, you're saying that because of the diminution in the value, because of the excess supply from the, primarily from the rim fire, those with timber holdings, at best, are going to get a revenue sufficient to perform the job of removing the, the timber?
Maybe slightly higher, but not much. Because it's, it's damaged timber already.
Yeah. It has, it has a reduced value anyway, right? But it's going to have to come out of there, right? I mean, these, these trees got to, they've got to come out. Otherwise, you can't replant, and you-
That's right.
You've got disease and whatnot.
Yes, but not everybody is going to choose to, to do that, but if it makes just a little bit of economic sense, it would be wise for them to do so.
These people that might not otherwise do it, what information would, would they need to, you know, help them make a decision, to?
Whether it's economically feasible for them, they can't lose any more money, if they don't have anything for them to take the timber out, and they don't have any money to pay for it, it would be rather difficult, but if it's going to put a few dollars in their pockets, then it would be economically, just the economic feasibility of it, and there are a couple of companies that are looking into a harvest, and they're identifying the areas where it's economically feasible for them to come in and pay the landowner to remove the trees and sell them.
They can go to that landowner, and they can do an, an assessment-
Yes.
-an evaluation, here's what you've got-
Yeah.
Here's what it's going to cost you, here's, here's your net.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have numbers for the people who do call our office, if they're interested in such an assessment, I can hook them up with the companies that are doing that.
Do you think that people with the holdings are aware of that information resource?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one, one question while I'm thinking of it, and that is, the, the timber that goes through here on trucks from the rim fire, a lot of it, it's got burned bark and all that, is that going into lumber in this country, or is that just going to the port to be shipped someplace else?
We're kind of like going off topic here, Ted.
Huh?
We're getting into a lot of the details of lumber production.
Well, I think it has to do with what he was talking about, is, is the, the ultimate price of lumber.
Okay. So, well, maybe if we can just answer that, and then I think we need to move on. Okay.
I'm not sure, but I think a lot of it's going for export.
Thank you very much.
If I may, this lumber issue was addressed at the last Board of Supervisors meeting, quite detailed. This lumber issue, yes, they are working on it, and substantially getting into more detail, and so on, so you don't know, I don't know if it's officially, unofficially, but might be good idea to communicate, it'll be there. But natural resources are being discussed substantially on the Board of Supervisors level, by public work, and et cetera, because some of those dead trees, that would be expensive to remove, also creating a natural hazard, because there's some kind of bugs in it, what might be great, that when they go to healthy trees, and there's a, so anyway, that is being discussed, and how they're going to handle it, public work, they've got a chipper, they're going to grind them out, and make them safe, and et cetera. Going back to the original comments that you folks mentioned, that as far as resources, I don't know if any of those items includes something like, next county over, they have fisheries, and it doesn't take any, or throws away any of the water. Sandviking County, if you're going toward Lockford, there's a big fishery over there. They get the water out, they grow fish at different ages, some go back to the river, some are going for recreational fishing, and some of them go on the market. There's a perfectly natural resource we have in this county to take advantage of it. It will bring tourists for fishing. It helps nature, so all the folks who are concerned about all the smelt and stuff, well, these are fish that can be consumed- that can be consumed by human beings. This mining, recently, I had to ask, quite strongly recommend some folks get off my property because they were dredging gold, putting the silt back. A couple of years ago, Supreme Court ruled that that's not polluting the water. You can take silt out of the creek, which is Calaveras River right now, my property, go through it, and a substantial amount of money, or some people think, that is gold. There is gold coming down. It's gold country, the gold is coming down the river. And the other thing is that we should take advantage of natural resources as hydropower. A couple of years ago, supervisors were supposed to apply for, but they do have small hydro generators, small units, and this doesn't affect the fish, but they do have hydro generators that you can, people who own property are next to the river or creek, or whatever, even if it's seasonal, that they do generate electricity, generating power. If you get into it, people are going to have babies, but they're going to go nuts on it. But yes, there's a tremendous amount of resource over there that would benefit the county. I just brought it up, I don't know if any of those items specifically or indirectly affecting those natural resources, but yes, those are available to us. It's given, just the question of taking advantage of it by local people. Thank you.
Colleen Plattigan, My Valley Springs. I had kind of a number of questions and clarifications on this, if you don't mind. On page two, this is under agricultural resources, page two, the first paragraph, "Historically, cattle and timber have been the leading agricultural commodities in the county. Cattle, calves, wine grapes, and walnuts are the county's three largest non-timber ag commodities." And looking at the background report at the numbers, it appears to me that poultry is actually higher than grapes. Poultry is listed as 2.96 million, and grapes are listed at 2.81 million, and walnuts are 1.87 million. So I was just, and poultry is included as other products below and not listed in the top three, and it seems like it should be in the top three if it's actually valued higher than grapes. That's according to information in the background report. I don't know if that's not current or not correct, but that's what's in the background report. So that was one question. And then in paragraph two, maybe you've already addressed that decrease and decline in farmland of 18 percent, and that's also reflected in the background report as a loss of about 200,000 acres of rangelands. And is that just because of this counting issue? And if so, it would be nice if that could be explained further, because that looks significant, and it sounds significant in the background report, and it makes you go, you know, why? So it'd be nice if that was addressed a little bit clearer, so that, you know, when we're looking at that, we don't say, oh dear, we lost 200,000 acres of rangelands, and why is that? And then down to the, one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph that Fawn brought up that you've all talked about, the no state designated prime farmlands. The rest of the sentence says, "or other important farmlands in Calaveras County." And I wanted to make sure you're not talking about, the sentence is not talking about just prime, it's also talking about important farmlands. And if you go, again, to the background report, which has all the acreages of all the crops and all the production, and gross values and this and that, according to that, we've got over 4,000 acres in productive farmland, which includes grapes, grain pastures, and all sorts of orchards. So I think that should be also reinforced, that we do have important farmlands in the county that need to be counted, and maybe even that number thrown in there, you know, at least 4,000 acres, maybe more. It'd just be nice to reinforce that information in there. That's that question. And under timber resources, maybe there isn't an answer to this, but it talks about, the first paragraph under timber resources on the next page, three, it talks about private ownership of timber lands and public ownership of timber lands. And it gives a number of acreages, the number of acres for Sierra Pacifics, and the number of acres for the U.S. Forest Service. And then the last sentence says, "Timber harvesting on private land is governed by this and that." And I'm wondering, what is the acreage of other private lands, private timber lands in the county, or is it significant at all? Or is basically all the private timber land in Calaveras County owned by Sierra Pacific? And I went to the background report trying to figure this out, because that's where the information should be. And there was a couple charts in there that were a little confusing. One chart said potential private timber lands of 267,000 acres. I think that was based on the species, you know, the kind of trees growing there. So it was potential timber lands. That was 267,000 acres of private. But then another chart said the actual production zone of private lands, private timber lands was 76,011 acres. So that's closer to the Sierra Pacific private ownership of 72,000. So I'm just trying to narrow down, if you understand what I'm trying to say, how much private timber lands are there besides Sierra Pacific in Calaveras County? And are we talking productive or potential? That's kind of my curiosity on that paragraph, that it doesn't quite address that. And then the last question I have, again, I like to know details on things, forgive me here, under mineral resources, there's a lot of generalities about the history of the county and the history of mining. And I don't see any figures, and I really couldn't find anything in the background report, about the actual number of active and inactive mines in the county. There's a statewide map with dots all over it, but that doesn't help me as far as Calaveras County. And there's some total, I'm also, what is the total acreage? There's a chart called mineral resource zone, and evidently, the MRZ2 is the significant mineral deposits present and likely. And I don't have any idea how much of our county is that. There's nothing that reflects what the actual acreage of this important, you know, resource land in the county. So I'm kind of looking for some more figures on actually what we have here, other than historical. So maybe I just couldn't find it, but I looked through the background report, and I couldn't find the acreage, or I couldn't find the number of active and inactive mines. So I thought that would be something that, if we know that, it would be good to put that in there. Thank you.
Marty Crane again. I'm sorry, I don't recall the name of the organization, but a number of years ago, at our library, we had a big meeting, and they were discussing the challenges of open mines that were then unsafe. And there's an organization or group in the state somewhere, and I know that somewhere here in our county, somebody knows who they were, but they have maps of all the mines, and they're working towards closing these mines off for safety issues. And so I just wanted to say that is there, and I really apologize, I can't remember who it was that was doing it, but somebody here knows who they are.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we are going to move on, and I think that Colleen brought up a couple of good questions, and starting from the back end was about the mineral resources. You know, we do have figures for ag and for timber, and it's true, there's really, you don't get a sense of, how big is, I mean, how big are our mineral resources? Is that...
I think we can beef up that section to provide that more detailed information.
A lot of her comments were with respect to the background report, where she wasn't finding information. Is there more that can be put into the background report? Are there other tables or data?
Either we can add it to the background report, or we can summarize the information, you know, by expanding the paragraph here a little bit to come up with that summary of that data. I think those are good suggestions, and we can do that.
And I would back up to her comment about the poultry production. If indeed that her numbers are right, let's definitely put that up there.
Verify that and make the correction necessary.
Give the chickens their day.
Yeah, I would agree with that, too. Any other comments? Shall we move on? Actually, no. I'm going to go back to what Peter was talking about, the fisheries and the hydro plants. If those exist in our county, should we be concerned about putting them in here, so that if somebody wants to do that into the future, there's no pushback on it because we've accepted it into this plan?
I think the fisheries is probably, it's not considered a commercial fishery, certainly we have recreational fishery here. We don't have the commercial fisheries you might have in the Central Valley, where the major river systems are, or the coastal counties, where fishing industry is an important, you know, economic component of the county's economy. I think fisheries is addressed to some degree in the conservation and open space. We talked about water quality, and then hydroelectric power is discussed in the public facilities and services element. I don't know that we necessarily need to put anything additional in here. I don't believe that not having some discussion in here would somehow prohibit or eliminate the ability for someone to develop some type of commercial fishery in the future, or certainly develop, you know, hydroelectric power. We've got a lot of that already in the county. So I'm not sure any changes are necessary at this point in time.
I was just, are fisheries in the crop report?
In the what report?
Crop report.
Kevin, is there anything in the crop report?
On fisheries?
Fisheries?
Presently, there's no fish farms in Calaveras County, and in the past, there has been a drop farm on Midwest Point.
Okay, thank you. All right, shall we move on? Okay. Goals and policies, under the general category. So this is meant to be sort of inclusive of all of the resource production?
Right.
Comments?
I have an opening comment, inasmuch as we've got a real estate, a broker-level real estate expert with us here. This commission, we've discussed in the past the concept of resource production lands being affected by development to where people have a home, they built it next to a resource production, and then they complain that they don't like the cowbells, and they, or the odor from the whatever. So my concern is that, to what extent might the county, to try to mitigate those effects, and we had quite a long discussion about that, to what extent should the county be reviewing the real estate disclosures, if they are, do need to be reviewed, are they adequate, to protect against those kinds of circumstances going forward?
That is not, the disclosure that we use is actually the ordinance that the county has adopted regarding agriculture. So we're not using our own language, we are disclosing the actual ordinance.
Oh, okay. To that...
Unless somebody wanted to review the ordinance, it's...
That would be my thing. I don't know that it needs to be reviewed, I don't know that if it's inadequate. I just thought, if we're trying to make sure that we mitigate against those kinds of circumstances, maybe we ought to look at that ordinance to see if it is adequate. I don't have an opinion on it.
So I think Commissioner Muniis is talking about the right-to-farm ordinance, which is probably part of the disclosure statement that any real estate transaction, you know, has to have.
Not just farming, but the other activities. For example, that a farm that looks one way and has one source of income, let's say it's sheep, doesn't mean that that's going to be sheep going forward. And the people who reside or decide to build and live near there need to understand that that won't necessarily be sheep. It might be something else. It might be chickens, it might be something else. They have to, they should be aware of that, so that they can't come back later and say, hey, I didn't move that chicken farm.
So there's two different aspects of that, and one is the real estate disclosure, which the county is not really involved in, other than the fact that the county has certain standards that the real estate industry then discloses to a buyer. We don't look at sales, we don't review that document, we don't want to be involved in that transaction. So I think, you know, the real estate industry is handling that appropriately, and there's no reason for the county to get involved in that. Where the county does get involved is where there are potential conflicts, and we decide that it's important to try to avoid those conflicts. Not to simply notify people of potential conflicts, but how do we limit or avoid those kind of conflicts? And those could be in some of these policies here, where we've talked about creating buffers, minimizing those conflicts through land use decision types of policies. You could have, you know, acreage sizes, so you don't put, you know, high-density residential unit next to a productive farm that increases the potential for complaints, and ends up harming the ag producer in the long run. You know, similar with timber, you put a lot of houses out in the forest where, you know, timber harvesting is going to occur, and then people are complaining about, you know, the trucks and the noise from timber harvesting.
Or the fact that the trees that they once saw are no longer there.
Exactly. And so by land use decisions, and say, well, we don't want to put a whole bunch of houses out in our timber land, that provides some protection for the timber industry, is say, okay, we won't have that sort of inherent conflict when you put a lot of people in the forest, because they love the trees, and internally, the trees are going to be harvested, and we have a lot of complaints, a lot of protests for the timber harvest plan. Those are the kind of things the county can do to try to minimize. And there's a number of things in the policy document here that is attempted to protect these resource-based industries.
Okay, we've got two approaches. That approach I understand completely. But if there is, hypothetically, if there was inadequate disclosures in the real estate industry, and those complaints don't go to the real estate industry, they come to us. So we ought to have some influence over what it is that people are told, and what the disclosures are, what they sign off on, so that we don't just protect these resources, these lands, these mines, these, you know, forests, by keeping people away from them, because you're never going to be able to mitigate all complaints, possible complaints, by doing that. People are going to be next to these things somehow.
Yeah. I don't think that, and I hope he agrees with me.
I'm going to step in here, because I think that you're stepping over the line a little bit. You're confusing a couple of different industries here. As a broker of real estate, you are responsible for those disclosures, or you will be sued. So if you're not disclosing it properly, that's on that broker. Yes, the county will get complaints, but when it comes to the timber harvest up where I live, I know logging trucks are going to come down the road, and anybody that buys there better know it, too. The thing is, is that you're saying those complaints are coming in, those complaints don't typically come from our homeowners, they're coming from outside sources that are coming into our county because they don't like logging, and we do, that's why we live here.
Yeah, and those people don't have standing. I'm talking about the people who arguably have standing.
Well, who has standing? The ones that's going to complain about chickens? The ones that's going to complain about chickens? Well, they had a side, the ordinance would have been disclosed to them. They don't have a right to complain.
I agree with you completely, but I'm not the one that comes forward and says, nevertheless, I'm complaining.
Well, the real estate industry is licensed by the state. We're held to that standard to disclose. So if there's an issue, that's on the disclosure, on the agent. The county has no oversight on that. We disclose the actual ordinance that comes out of the county. It's very clear that we're an agricultural county, and if you move here, you buy here, you're going to live and die by that rule.
That's great. So now we're back to the ordinance and whether it reads as completely as it might need to read.
I think it's very clear.
And I said before, I don't know what the ordinance says, but if it needs to include language to the effect that agricultural activities, for example, may include, you know, the following, but not limited to, so that people understand the way it looks right now is not necessarily the way it's going to look during their lifetime in that dwelling.
So one of the implementation measures is to update the right to farm ordinance, so that will be something that will be coming back in the future.
Not necessarily to update it, but to review it for the possible need for updating.
And so if there are changes that need to be made to it to make it more clear, then that can be done. I think what the important part of the policy language here is that, yes, we will have a right to farm ordinance. We do want to sort of set that bar fairly high, as far as we are an ag community, and protecting of the ag resource is important to us, and where push comes to shove, ag is going to take precedence over perhaps some other uses where there is an inherent conflict. And so the purpose of the right to farm ordinance, as well as some of this policy language.
Yeah, and I would, we mentioned airports in connection with that discussion, and in spite of disclosures, real estate disclosures, airports, small airports have been shut down because neighborhoods have been built nearby, and enough people complained, and shut them down.
And the same thing happens-
I flew out of one of those.
Same thing happens with agricultural uses in some time. So, you know, we do as much as we can, and I think to try to blend the county's responsibilities and the real estate industry's responsibilities. We'll set the standards. They disclose what that is. And for us to get involved in those transactions is totally irrelevant.
Not the transaction, but the standard.
But yeah, the standard is clearly the county's role.
That's all I had. That was the sum total of my input.
So are there comments on the individual policies?
Yes. So I want to go to, under the goal of RP 1, there was a recommendation in here to change that language that the county shall continue to support. I'm sure I've got the right one. Hold on a sec. I think the language was to protect the long-term viability of economic, and I liked that verbiage of going with protect. It starts out, long-term viability and economic within the county. It doesn't say what the long-term viability and economic productivity of resource production lands. But if we put in there to continue to protect or protect the long-term viability, it actually makes it a goal. As it reads right there, it just needs a little more, a word to clarify the goal, don't you think?
I guess this is sort of a format discussion that it's sort of throughout the entire general plan and how the goals and policies are crafted. The way I wrote the goals, or I sort of modified the goals, a lot of them were written before I inherited, but I didn't put a verb in the goal. The goal is sort of an ideal. It's a thing that's out there. Our goal is to have long-term viability. We could go back and add verbs to each one of the goals. It doesn't really matter. So where the verb statements come in, or in the policy language, okay, we go, how do we achieve that goal? How do we achieve that long-term viability of, you know, the economic productivity of our resources? Then we get into, well, we're going to do this, we're going to do that.
I guess when I'm looking at it, Peter, where I'm struggling is, and I'm not telling you to go back and rewrite everything, but when I read this goal, and it starts out long-term viability and economic productivity of resource production lands within the county, what's, it doesn't have a goal to me. It's, what is it saying? Am I wrong?
I had exactly the same problem when I first picked up the 214 draft 10 months ago and started reading it. That's a funny way to put it. But the more I read it, the more I realized, you know what? It's better without the verb, because you're, which verb? You could pick dozens of verbs, and then you pick one, and then you're at the exclusion of the others. And what is implied is, the unwritten part is to have, right in front of everything, to have long-term, or we desire, et cetera. So I think it actually works better. I note that the Sierra Pacific people, I had the same problem with it, but once I got past my need for a verb in a sentence, it worked fine for me.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, it's like it's, it's not action, it's not how we're going to do it, it's what the end result we want it to look like. So I'm fine with just the non-verb version.
That was my intent in writing it that way.
So I had one on 1.2, limit the intrusion and encroachment of incompatible uses onto. Should that be also nearby or adjacent or in proximity to, or, you know, it's not just on resource production lands, or is that the intent? We talk a lot about adjacent uses and proximity.
You're debating of or on?
I'm suggesting that it's not just on, it's also contiguous to adjacent, you know, it's not just that encroachment onto resource production land. Aren't we also talking about potential encroachment nearby?
I'm sorry, you're not on RP 1?
Policy 1.2.
Yes.
So what, if somebody owns land that's zoned different, because everywhere you go, Fawn, we're going to back up to another piece of zoning. So we've got resource production going on here. Eventually, it has to back up to something else, or the entire county is going to be one zoning. So what you're saying is, is if you have resource production, and then you own a piece of commercial next to it, you can't utilize your commercial property? Is that what you're saying?
I'm talking about planning. I'm not just talking about zoning. I'm talking about that if you were looking at somebody wanting to do a general plan amendment to allow commercial shopping center right next to a agricultural production land, that you might think that that's probably not a good fit.
I think the way that I read that is for existing lands. I don't think that that was, limit the intrusion, encroachment of incompatible uses. Well, I guess you're right. It could read that way.
I mean, I guess, how do you limit the intrusion, encroachment of incompatible uses onto resource production lands?
Well, I don't think you would allow a zoning change there, where it's going to cause an compatibility issue, but-
Well, again, that the overall policy of the county is that we do not create these conflicts, or we can avoid them. Some of the implementing measures would be either through approval of a project, or we might create an ordinance that requires certain buffering. So it could affect adjacent lands as well, depending on the situation and how we will have, implementing this overall policy.
I like the language limit.
Well, I like limit, too. I'm just saying onto. Is onto enough, or is it, do we need to say-
Onto an adjacent to?
Yeah, something adding. Like, is it just, is onto enough, or is it adjacent to?
I think it's enough. I think it could encompass any kind of intrusion. But if you want to be more clear-
I would be opposed to the word adjacent.
That can certainly grow. What does adjacent mean? It just starts spreading. Okay, how about-
When you go to the goals, though, they do tend to affect adjacent lands. When you're talking about buffering and setback, it's not-
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, you're already talking about adjacent properties.
When you get to the goal, I mean, the implementation measures, is what I meant to say. So I do think addition of the word adjacent would be appropriate, given the implementation measures that we are going to be considering.
May I suggest the word affecting instead of onto? So it may be adjacent, but in any case, it's affecting resource production lands. Limit the intrusion and encroachment of incompatible uses affecting. Germain is wrong.
Or that may affect.
There you go. So it may be an adjacent property issue. I'm with Lisa. I don't want the thing to just morph into a vague concept that-
I'm all for protecting our ag lands and resource productions. You'll find me to be right in behind that. What I'm against is the next person that owns that piece of property. Should we say, it could go both ways. I mean, we can protect our ag and our resource production lands, but what about the person that owns the land next to it? Are you going to do the same thing and tell the agricultural people they can't encroach on them? I mean, you've got to be very careful with this, because you've got buffers that are being told to be put in place, but I think that you need to be very careful when you're affecting someone else's property rights, both ways. It goes both ways.
I agree. And that's why I like the affecting concept better than the location. Whether it's adjacent or not is not germane, it's whether or not it's really affecting that resource production property. If it's an incompatible use, and it's nearby, but it's not affecting anything that the ag production is, that's going on on that production property, then who cares?
I'm fine with affecting.
I think-
That may affect.
Yeah, sure.
Kelly had the better version of that.
What do you have? What did he say?
Instead of onto, that may affect.
Are we good with that? Yeah? Ted's good?
Yes.
Okay, all right. 1.3, require newly created or adjusted parcels. You know, I'm guessing an adjusted parcel is potentially a lot line adjustment?
Yes.
Maybe we should say lot line adjustment? I don't know. I mean, is there any other way to adjust parcels? Because it seems, I mean, people, I think, would be more familiar with lot line adjustments rather than just adjusted parcels.
I'm sorry, Fawn, I'm not, could you speak up just a little bit for the benefit of an old man here?
Sure. My question is, the term adjusted parcels. My question to Peter, are there, is there any other way to adjust a parcel other than a lot line adjustment? And if there isn't, then maybe we should just call it a lot line adjustment.
I'm not sure, I'm not aware of any other way to adjust-
Adjusted parcel includes any way that you change, that you carve it up?
Well, that's my question. Is it referring, is there any other way to adjust a parcel other than a lot line adjustment? Because I think people are more familiar with the term lot line adjustment than, I don't know, adjusted parcels.
But doesn't dividing do the same thing?
Splits. Well, that would be the newly created.
Sure.
Right. So this is not, you're adjusted, you have the same parcel, but you're just, well, you're adjusting the boundaries.
And you're, so you want to be more specific on what an adjusted parcel is?
Only because I wasn't, I had to think about, what's an adjusted parcel?
Or lot line adjusted parcels?
Something that makes it clear about what it is. Unless there's, that's why I wasn't sure, if there's other ways to adjust parcels other than-
If it only means that one thing, then it doesn't need to be specific, because by definition, it's a lot line adjustment.
Well, that would be for people that know that you're talking, that there aren't, like, multiple ways to adjust a parcel. I mean, why not, if that's the only way, why not call it what it is?
I don't have a problem with that. That's not my problem with 1.3, anyway.
We could throw a lot line in there if that makes it clearer.
Well, for me, it would. So go on to your comment about 1.3.
My comments are with respect to the adequate size and compatibly zoned to minimize potential conflicts between uses, or potential uses. And what would constitute a conflict in our minds here? We talk about conflicts. This kind of gets to the heart of the issue that we've discussed many times, in my opinion, but what, where's the conflict?
Well, I think the conflict is where you, where the county would potentially approve a subdivision adjacent to farmland, where we would put lots, smaller lots, up against a ranch. There is more problem with trespass, there is problem with dogs harassing livestock, just that inherent conflict between residential uses and agriculture uses. Complaints about the smells, complaints about the noise, you know, during harvest time, there's, you know, zon guns and everything else to keep the birds away, that keeps the neighbors awake at night, you know, all those kind of conflicts. By minimizing the numbers of small lots adjacent to farmland, that helps to minimize those potential conflicts. Despite, you know, disclosures to the contrary, but, you know, the whole airport syndrome raises its head, and it's happening throughout the state, throughout the country, that inherent urban rural conflict.
People from some of these subdivisions have been known to cut fences, go in and cut wood, grow marijuana, shoot cattle, those sorts of things.
That's a great paragraph.
That's what we use for disclosures.
Personally, I would like to see, we're discussing the ordinance that we came up with, the real estate disclosure ordinance, which starts out with a very, very nicely worded paragraph. In my view, and I'm not a real estate professional, in my view, there ought to be some detail that follows that, but I don't want to go where I don't know a lot about it, and I don't know, and so I'm relying on professional opinion here, but I think it ought to be, at least on our list of things to look at.
I guess, you know, this policy and some of the other policies that are recommended in this element really get to sort of the fundamental policy question, you know, that the county needs to make, ultimately the Board of Supervisors. Do we want to have special provisions in our code, in our plan, that provides a heightened level of protection for resource-based industries?
Yeah.
Or, you know, does it matter? Should someone be able to subdivide quarter acre parcels right next to a ranch?
I like the way that this 1.3 is worded, because it says we want to minimize it for potential conflict between the uses. I think, I mean, I don't think that needs to be changed.
Ultimately, through adoption of an ordinance, we'll need to decide, okay, what is that standard? Is it five acre? Is it 10 acre? Is it two acre? What is the minimum parcel size that's appropriate next to agricultural land or timberland? And those kind of details we'll need to get into further, but this sort of sets the initial policy level. Yes, this is important. We want to try to minimize these conflicts, and we're going to choose the side of ag over residential development in this conflict arena.
So you were making proposals to change this RP 1.3, Fawn. Word of you, or just some verbiage in here?
Word, if you were just some verbiage in here you didn't like. It was the adjusted...
I think we just add the word, require newly created or lot line adjusted parcels. Clarifies it.
And then what was the verbiage you wanted changed?
I didn't, I didn't suggest a change in verbiage. I just had a question as to what we anticipate being the conflicts, because eventually, we're going to get to programs, and the programs are to address what kind of conflicts we foresee.
Right.
So we're good on that one, other than the one word change for Fawn?
Okay.
1.4? I don't have any issues with that.
This, to me, is a continuation of 1.3, and it reads more like a program than a policy. It's, it would be in support of 1.3. Does anybody agree with my reasoning on that?
It's somewhat different because 1.3 is dealing with newly created or lot line adjusted parcels.
This is on the current setbacks.
And 1.4 is dealing with something different, that is setbacks or other measures. They are similar, but not the same.
Right, right. One sort of addresses the parcel size, the other addresses where you might locate uses on a property.
1.5?
Nothing from me.
Nothing from me. I had just a question about, what is raw water?
Untreated water? So if you're using that for irrigation purposes, it doesn't need to meet drinking water standards?
1.6 or 1.7?
1.6 I have some issues with. First of all, I don't know what mitigation banking is, so I'll pass that. We learned, I think, in an earlier session that transfers of development rights are perpetual, and I think we also learned that they don't really fit this county, and I think we eliminated the reference to them in the land use section, specifically LU-1F. And so I don't think they should be here. And so on now, down to conservation easements, which, you know, it reads like apple pie. Who could be against that? I am, and I'll tell you why. The first thing is conservation easements are perpetual in duration, and that's so by statute. You can't change it. And I think we learned earlier that in the planning business, the further out you go in trying to plan things or predict things, the cloudier the crystal ball gets. And a restriction on land use that goes on forever is a very long time ahead. These conservation easements are essentially contracts or deeds between private parties, such as land trusts, the Humane Society of the United States, government agencies, people like the Audubon Society, and private landowners. The, unless the county is going to get into business of funding or holding these easements, it has nothing to say about what goes in them. They essentially operate without regard to land use designations in a general plan and without regard to zoning, in the sense that the land use designation and the zoning may permit particular activities. When an easement goes on, it can completely outlaw those activities, whether the county wants it or not, and whether it makes sense to anybody but the two private entities that have entered into them. You know, it may make no sense to anybody but them. To me, that's dangerous. I've got more. I'll give you an example. There was, there is a tract of land of about 90 acres, right next to Angel's Camp. In fact, it borders the Angel's Oak subdivision, where you have water and power and sewer right there. And we're supposed to be encouraging development contiguous to existing communities. The owner put a conservation easement on that property prohibits all development, and for good measure prohibits vineyards, orchards, cutting wood, hunting. You can't even shoot a coyote on that land. Under the statute, a conservation easement can have the purpose of retaining land in its natural condition, which means you can have a conservation easement that provides that no human being can ever set foot on that ground again or do anything with it. I do not think that this county should do anything to encourage those kinds of practices.
I would agree, and I would also add the reminder that in the land use element, I, my memory is that we deleted all references to TDRs.
I'm correct.
Also, with respect to cluster development, a topic that I brought up before, there's two ways that you can treat cluster development. The way that it was intended, in my, in my understanding of the word, that I looked it up and what the sources were, but the cluster development was designed to allow for dwelling units to be placed on a property in the right number, depending on how you zone, but where the topography wouldn't allow them to be spread evenly around. Okay, so it was a, it was a tool for that purpose only. It seems to have morphed into a tool that, that says, do it for a different reason. Not because the land won't allow you to evenly divide the parcels, but because you want to create an open space where you wouldn't otherwise have one.
Right.
Now, conceptually, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that, but is that, you agree that that's now how clustered, clustering is being treated here?
Clustering can be used for that. It could be used to, maybe there is a partial, part of, I mean, in this context, where you might have a part of a property that's very productive agriculturally, you don't want to carve that up into, you know, 10 acre parcels. Let's say it's a zone for 10 acres, but there's, you know, land available. It's also, is currently in ag production. In order to continue that ag production, you could cluster the housing in an area that's not as productive for that agricultural. So there's a variety of reasons you could cluster something.
Okay.
Ag, conservation.
Right.
Just topography, you know.
And I like that concept, and here comes the question is, what happens to the zoning on this piece of property? You had 160 acres, it was ag, and then you carved out, you, let's see, you apply, you apply for a map amendment, right, to rezone the place, rezone 160 acres for the equivalent of five acres parcels, right? So that's, how many, that's 32 lots. And then you put those 32 dwellings on a smaller portion. Zoning wise, what have you done to that 160 acres? You've, you've, you keep the zoning for ag on, on 130 acres of it, and you, and you changed another 30 to residential five acres?
Typically, what's done is, is it's handled through a plan development where the transfer or the internal transfer, the clustering is done. Everything is zoned, whatever the underlying zoning is. So if you're 160 acres and the ideal is to get 16 lots, 10 acre parcels, but you're going to do that on a smaller portion of it, the whole thing would be zoned, you know, RA10 PD, and allow that clustering. And so it sort of recognizes, even though the rest of this is all zoned, the RA10 PD, its density has been utilized elsewhere. There are other tools you could use to do that through the development process. You could zone it, you know, either open space or an ag zone or something like that. But it sort of implies that, you know, by the PD, that you've, the whole of the project is looked at, and you can't just sort of take a part of that later on and then say, okay, here's what we want to, you know, we want to further subdivide that because that density has already been utilized.
Right, it's gone.
Yeah.
As far as the county...
Without going through a further, you know, zone change or general plan amendment or something along those lines.
Okay, that could happen.
Could happen, yes.
In the future, let's say beyond the, beyond the view of this general plan, that could happen. That additional ag acreage, regardless of what had been done, it can come back around and be changed again.
And usually, there's some kind of notice that's recorded that, you know, shows also, it comes up in any kind of, you know, title report that, oh, the density has been, you know, applied elsewhere on this as part of that development project.
So what I'm wondering, is it a possible resolution might be just to limit some of the examples? To what? Limit the examples provided. I mean, it could be use a wide, wide variety of land conservation tools, including Williams Net contracts. I don't, are there ag enterprise zones? I've never heard of one.
We don't have any that I'm aware of in the county here, but we could create something like that.
We could do our own like an ag. It's not like a state, like an enterprise zone, state enterprise zone. I've just never heard of an ag enterprise zone.
I'm not familiar with the specifics of it, but I think that it's something that we could, it's probably enabled by either state or federal legislation, but the county could implement something like that.
Okay, I'm just not familiar with what it is, but we could, you know, like if that one's, you know, seems harmless enough, and then also clustering, and just limit the examples provided.
Well, I think maybe Fawn's got swerved into an idea here. If you, if you take the sentence, use a wide variety of conservation tools, then jump to, to encourage the long-term productivity of resource production lands, and then with respect to any details, that comes in your programs, and we hash it out there. One of which is going to be, the TDRs are going to be gone, I hope.
So take out the examples altogether?
Yeah.
That's fine. I think the policy is, is that we want to encourage conservation and use, productive use of, of resource production lands.
And why be specific here?
We don't have to provide examples.
Right.
That's fine.
Because we will be addressing them more specifically in the implementation measures in which these, it already refers to two of them. Are we good with that?
Everybody knows we're just taking that one sentence. We, after tools, we jump down to the, to encourage the rest of that sentence, and that's all there is to that element, that component, 1.6.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Moving on, 1.7.
I don't have a 1.7.
I don't think.
No.
My only comment was, I don't know that there's a comma after of.
Well, separating that phrase or constraining the use of.
Oh, I see, with the one ahead of it?
Yeah.
Okay. That's good. All right, 1.9. My only question about 1.9 is, and maybe there is a difference that I'm not seeing it, but it seems like 1.9 is a more general statement of what all of the previous policies are stating.
Including the one we just edited?
Well, all of them, it seems like, except maybe it's the economic viability? Maybe that's the new caveat that that's addressing?
I think it's a fairly generalized statement that we want to protect these uses and the economic viability. I don't think it hurts to have...
I don't, I don't think it, no.
Duplicate, you know, just stated in maybe a different way. You're right.
Well, do we need to distinguish 1.9 from, from 1.6 by making 1.6 specific to land use conservation tools, whereas 1.9 is various other things? Because otherwise, to me, it says the same thing.
Yeah, I think that 1.9 maybe focuses on the actual operation, how that differs from, I mean, it's, this came from the Ag Coalition's recommendations to me, and I thought, well, you know, it's consistent with the rest of the goals and policies. It doesn't create any conflict. It certainly doesn't, you know, provide any problems with it. Is it necessary?
Well, and...
I think we've covered the issues elsewhere, but it just sort of reinforces those things. I don't think there's any harm in having it there.
Actually, you know, in rereading all of the, spending all this time on the other ones and the discussion, I think the difference is the emphasis on the economic viability, which really isn't addressed in, I think, in the previous policies.
Well, I agree that, and it has some different programs attached to it, and I think it does speak to something other than land use.
Yeah, I agree.
Issues. It's promotions and encouragements and that list.
So I, I mean, I, I guess what I'm saying is I'm seeing the difference in the importance of having it stand on its own.
I would leave it in there.
Yeah, I'm leaving it. Okay. 1.10?
I don't have a problem with 1.10, but to me, this reads very much like an implementation measure for other policies, and I would make the same comment with respect to 1.11. This is pretty specific as to what the county's going to do.
I agree with that notion, and the only other issue that I have with 1.1 is that I would like, on A, I would like for us to consider the word significantly or significant with, in connection with these existing conflicts. A will not significantly intensify existing conflicts, because one could argue that, you know, any measure intensifies a conflict, but we've got to, we've got to put a perspective on that, and I'm, I'm suggesting that the word significantly before intensify and significant before conflicts later in that same sentence gets to that point, addresses that issue. And maybe I'm being overly sensitive.
Which would make it consistent with C.
Thank you. Didn't, I didn't pull it from there, but yes, you're right. And then Kelly's larger issue of moving this to programs, I think is well taken.
This is sort of the, that border area between what's a policy and what's a program. In my mind, the programs are activities that the county intends to undertake in order to implement the policies. While this is something that we would do sort of on an ongoing basis, I'm sort of afraid it might actually get lost in the implementation measures rather than having it stand out as a policy. It's a policy of the county that we're going to do this with each project that comes by that has that potential. It probably doesn't really matter. I guess my recommendation was it remains as a policy as opposed to an implementation measure, but...
Well, it requires specific determinations by the approving authorities. It requires actual action by whoever the approving authority is. To me, that's an implementation. You have to do something. It's not just a policy.
And who are the possible approving authorities?
It could be me, it could be you, it could be the Board of Supervisors. So whenever a project's approved, that these affect agricultural land, these specific actions would need to be taken. So whenever a project's approved, that these affect agricultural land, these specific actions would need to be taken. This is part of our analysis and part of the final decision-making. It'd be included in the, the resolution language typically.
I think what Mr. Wooster's point is that this, this reads as a specific set of actions relevant to 1.3. For example, or 1.6.
And 1.9.
If it's a consensus of the commission, they move it to implementation. We can certainly do that.
Bump 'em?
I'm not sure. Considering.
Well-
Maybe consider it and we'll hear what the public has to say.
And maybe as programs, we need to work on the language a little bit, but they read like programs almost right now.
And maybe what we might want to do is just, you know, keep it where it is for now until we hear, I'm sure we'll hear from possibly the Ag Coalition.
Agree, just don't work on the wording right now, but agree to move them.
And maybe there's some, some compelling reasons that they feel it's more important to be as a policy than an implementation measure. Shed some light on that for us.
Wouldn't we have that discussion?
Yes.
We can always move it back.
We can.
That's how powerful we be.
Are we to 1.11? Because I had some word changes.
I believe so.
Okay, and C, I just think the language isn't quite right. It says the effect of the proposed public facility upon adjoining resource production lands. I think it should be adjoining. And then I think it should go on and say was considered, not were considered, because the subject is effect. And I would change the next word and to two words, as was, whether the proposed site would be incompatible.
I'm fine with that.
And as was?
Yeah, the as was isn't working. Read that again.
It's additionally.
It's additionally, it was, it would read the effect of the proposed public facility upon adjoining resource production lands was considered,
As was.
As was, whether the proposed site would be incompatible.
There's a comma there too.
Okay.
After considered.
Right.
All right. So shall we, do you guys want to take a five-minute break and then we'll-
I sure do. I was just going to beg you for one.
Okay, so we will recess until 11:00. And then we'll come back and then I think we'll hear from the public on this general section of policies. So 11 o'clock we'll reconvene. Thank you. Convene the planning commission meeting? So at this point, we were, we'll be taking public comment on the goals and policies general section. And that would be the goal as well as the policies 1.2 through 1.11.
Good morning. I'm Bob Guaramendi. On 1.9, that policy, the, the reason or the purpose there was specifically focusing more on activities and operations rather than planning itself. So that's, that's why that was differentiation was made. David mentioned, or somebody mentioned a compelling reason on 1.10, whether that should be in policy or programs. I, I don't know if I can come up with a compelling reason why it couldn't be shifted. The, the concern again there was that when things are considered, there's a, a standard set of criteria to be considered. And the planning director or somebody else rather than us probably knows better where to put that. But the idea was is to have that, those standard, that standard criteria in place. The other, quickly, on 1.6, you know, we don't have a problem with what your recommendation is there about the examples, because they will be coming up later. And we would, in our discussions over the years, we were very, we were looking for things other than what is typical. And, and that's what we're hoping, that, that the planning commission and the board will look at alternatives to what is normally thought of. Kelly's position on conservation easements, one certainly can't argue with, with his concern. But are there other tools that can be used? And, and I'm sure there are. We just need to sort of focus on that. And I think that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Well, we are going to be, so do we want to talk about 110 and 111? Shall we move those to implementation measures?
Yes.
I'm in agreement.
Okay. All right, so we are moving on to agriculture.
Peter, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
And so we'll dig into that with, starting with the goal.
I don't have a comment until 2.3. So if anybody's got something before that-
Okay, actually, I don't have one until 2.3 either.
I'm good.
Are we on 2.3 then?
We're on 2.3.
My only comment is that marketing doesn't seem to fit with the concept of land use practices.
That was my, I agree with you.
If, we may want to split that out.
Well, and I think, I don't know if they're talking about marketing or I, to me, is that like onsite sales?
Well, to me, the 2.3 deals with marketing because the examples that are given, Calaveras grown, farm-to-table, et cetera, is, you know, these are marketing concepts that, and that's fine that they're in here. They just don't, we just don't need to be referencing land use, innovative land use practices with, as descriptors of that.
Well, I would be fine with allow for innovative land use practices that support agriculture. Just get rid of including marketing.
No, I think marketing should be in there.
But how is marketing an innovative land use practice?
That's my-
Yeah, because it's-
That's the end, that's the sum total of my, my issue.
I guess the concept here is that, and so maybe getting back to what Bob Guaramendi is, sort of looking outside the box of your typical, you know, farmer grows a crop, he sells it to a wholesaler, or he puts up a fruit stand. Are there other ways? Is there direct marketing? Is there farm-to-table programs? Are there other programs that the county might encourage or allow through its zoning practices? I mean, right now, through some of the ag, what's the term we use? You know, our ordinance allows certain activities on agricultural land that allows additional marketing to go on. It's maybe beyond what the normal traditional thing is. That's why the marketing aspect is tied to land use.
Oh, okay.
Commercial, the commercial activity associated with, with marketing your product can sometimes conflict with the more stringent uses allowed in agricultural zones.
So a person who's got a strawberry thing and he's got a strawberry booth set up, this, this says you could do that.
Yeah, and there may be other kind of programs out there that, okay, so we have a strawberry festival that brings people on the property and gee, they sell a whole bunch of strawberries during that time. Those are kind of, of activities that-
So are.
Are land use oriented.
So-
That we're trying to get that with this.
Does our current zoning, are these practices that our current zoning would otherwise not allow? We need to make adjustments in our zoning to allow-
We need to look at that. I think right now we're pretty good at the things that we do allow. But we just want to make sure that we don't inhibit that, either through changes in the future or, you know, as we look, look back at our ordinance, as we update our ordinance after this, that we, we look at this policy and say, is there anything in here that we could do that would enhance the, the marketing, the sales of ag products in the county?
I'd like to.
It could be value-added type of things as well. So instead of just selling apples, you sell apple pies.
Okay, so it, we allow it now, and we just want to make sure that some,
We don't restrict that.
Down the road, somebody does, we don't make some, some turn in the, in the road that, that cuts that activity out.
Or something new comes up that we haven't thought of today, we go, we should amend our code to allow that, because that's a great idea. And that's consistent with this policy.
I agree.
Would this read better if the word including was-
No, we'll have public comments later. Thank you.
Was and? In other words, change the word including marketing to read and marketing?
Yeah, that'd be better for me.
I'm good with that.
Yep, me too.
Okay. All right. 2.4. The only thought I had, and this was on a couple of, couple of them, was rather than having these long sentences, because we have done it elsewhere, is that if we had support educational and voluntary stewardship programs, that, and like semi-colon, and then just bullet. Promote recognition of agriculture's importance to the county. Another bullet, encourage implementation of best management. Another bullet. I mean, it's, it seems like it's, it's easier to read, it's clearer. You don't have this list. So it's, it's just a format thing.
Okay, so you're going to put a period after Calaveras County?
Support educational and voluntary stewardship programs, that, and then semi-colon, and then you have a, then you bullet the rest of that paragraph. Would that be consistent?
I have no problem with that.
That's fine. We've, we've done that on several of the implementation measures and, yeah.
I mean, I'm not like, it's not married to it. Okay.
It works.
I'm good with that.
Fine.
So the colon, colon goes after what? The word programs?
That.
Yeah, that, after that, yeah.
After that.
2.5?
Nothing.
I had one comment on 2.5, and that was at the very end. And I'm just wondering why we need the phrase after practices despite inherent conflicts with residential land uses.
I think that needs to be there.
I mean, that's-
Do you think the emphasis is needed?
I do.
I do too.
Okay.
Because I think that's the biggest issue that we face.
All right. Any others?
I'm good till-
Are any other comments on agricultural resources? No?
I'm-
Okay. So do we want to take public comment on this?
Yeah, I think Peter had something to say.
Okay, so we will take public comment on agricultural resources, the goal and policies 2.1 through 2.7.
The only thing I would, Peter raised, the only thing I would, maybe you want to consider on 2.3, allow, change it to encourage, because we are very well blessed with natural resources that should be able to take advantage of and encourage them to take advantage of. I'm sure people who own large land, they didn't buy that land to put into the Williamson Act, but to have some growth. And if you encourage them to do it, I'm not saying forcing it, but encourage them. So whoever makes the rules, and there was prior, prior paragraphs up there below, was that better use of water. There were some studies made about how to encourage them by water to have growth. Encourage people, silly thing, but the grapes, the land around fifth district, you're talking about five, 10 acres, that the soil is perfect for growing grapes. Not much else, but for instance, grapes cooperate between some wine makers, grow some grapes that they can use, either by, either doing it, they can do it themselves with the guidance of the particular product. Grazing. If I can remove all that manzanilla in a fifth district, folks, beside getting rid of all the fire hazard, that land would be so great for grazing goats or sheep or whatever. It's above my pay grade. Encourage them, encourage them to take use of gray water, for instance. Make people aware that, hey, instead of using drinking water to water their corn or whatever, take advantage of it. It would help the whole county altogether. So I feel it would be nice to put over, encourage people to do it, cooperate. But large landowners know what they're doing, not a dummy like me when it comes to farming. But I got 20 acres of manzanilla. If I, and fire district will eventually get rid of the manzanilla. But that grazing land is fantastic. I'm not talking about a high-density downtown rancher, but there's a lot of acreage out there that is going to waste and waiting for the right time to do something with it. And maybe cooperation between the farmers and some of these smaller lots, and I'm talking about five, 10 acres, 15, 20, 40 acres, whatever. Encourage them, maybe some county policy that creates cooperation with the locals uphill and downhill. Would benefit all. Encourage them to do a cooperate or something like that. If people can show how to grow corn and instead of burning it for food, and burn the manzanilla for energy. So if you could, maybe you want to consider, instead of allowing it, encourage it. Unless it would create a problem to somebody. Thank you. That's the only thing.
Thank you.
Marty Crane, I'm not sure, but I, there appears to be a few differences between what's posted and what I'm looking at and, and what you've been going through. But on item number 2.4, let me know if it's changed from what I'm looking at. But the last bullet that you would be suggesting says or, provide for multiple or alternative beneficial uses of agricultural lands. So to have the word or at the beginning, says you're going to do what you said before.
I think the or would go away.
Is the or gone already?
Yes.
It's a bullet, it's a bullet point without the or in it.
Well, I didn't know if you had already moved it, and I just didn't see it. Thank you.
We were counting on Peter to do that, I'm sure.
I'd already made that.
Yeah, thank you.
Lou Mayhew, regarding 2.3, it's a little bit vague to me. I, I'd like to assume that allow for innovative land use practices means that things that are agriculturally related. In other words, you couldn't put a waterslide on a corner of the property that serves to support the agricultural, the rest of the agricultural enterprise on that property. I, I, I think I'm being perhaps too sensitive, but nonetheless, it is, to me, it's a bit vague. Allow for innovative land use practices consistent with-
Agricultural resources.
Yes.
I mean, it's under those goals and policies, so.
Yeah, right, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it says that support agriculturally related economic development.
Bob Guaramendi, on 2.3, point of clarification, back in 2- Bob Guaramendi, on 2.3, point of clarification, back in 2000, the county initiated rezoning effort. And part of that process, that's when the Ag Coalition was actually formed, back in 2000, I believe. We stuck with this zoning ordinance change that would apply to agricultural lands. And we spent five years and got that adopted by the board. And your question about what's allowed or what isn't allowed and that, when we worked on the general plan, we just had a brand-new ag ordinances, zoning ordinances adopted. So we went, when we worked through the general plan, we were trying to make it, I know it sounds, it is backwards, but make it consistent with what was just approved by the board from the zoning perspective. So some of these are to support what is already in place, as far as the zoning ordinance is concerned.
I don't have a problem with that.
No, I just, it was a point of clarification. And, and part of that zoning, maybe a waterslide is appropriate. As far as, what we were trying to do is look at agriculture, at least at that time, and it changes, as everybody knows, to provide the landowner the opportunity to have alternative sources of income on that land, as long as it's compatible, it meets a whole set of criteria. So I wouldn't automatically rule out a waterslide, actually. Actually, I know of one in the county on ag land.
So, so a landowner in, in, consistent with agritourism, could say, I'm going to make a little, I'm going to make this attractive for people to come to, and they're going to look at the animals, and they're going to maybe ride horses, and there's something for the kids to do, that kind of thing?
You're exactly right.
Those little mining, pan for gold type of things that?
There was, there was, I don't know, several, there's several years of discussion, I think, on this issue about special events, agritourism. The Wine Grape Alliance brought this forward, as you know, Murphy's, there's weddings, there's events, things of that nature. And, and that, that's already in zoning, that's already in our zoning. And so some of these policies are in there to, I guess, facilitate that zoning that's already there.
Yeah, let's just not call it a waterslide, let's call it a flume.
A mining.
Or a sluice.
So, anyway, I just wanted you to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If there's no one else, I have to apologize, because I did have a comment on 2.7, which is a new one.
Hold on, I'll bring it back to the commission and then let's.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. 2.7?
2.7, which is a new one that Planning added, identify and protect important farmland in the county. You know, very broad statement. The supporting implementation measure is 2.1.
This is 2I, actually.
Pardon me, it's RP 2I. And that deals with a mapping.
Is that bullet three?
Where is that darn thing?
Page 13.
What page? Well, here it is, page 13. Work with the California Department of Conservation to complete the farm, farmland mapping and monitoring program for Calaveras County. So with respect to 2.7, is 2I a identify and protect sort of program, or is it just an identify program?
Primarily is identify, and then from there, then the county can use that information in its actions regarding zoning activities, development, you know, gives us more information. So that really sort of is the, the policy that directs us to look, work with the state to finish up this mapping, so we look at the whole county and see.
Okay, now, with respect to the concept of protection, there are any number of programs that, where that, I mean, that list goes on and on.
Yeah.
Okay. So with respect to support for 2.7, there's a bunch of them.
There's probably more.
Because of, because of the broadness of the statement.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's one other thing I just noticed as we were going through this. 2.2 talks about ag and timber, and maybe it should be moved to more general provisions under goal number one. No changes to it, just move its location.
Because it addresses more than one resource.
Yes.
I'd be fine with that.
Makes sense.
Fine.
You guys good? Okay. And so then there was Mr. Race's question about changing or adding or changing 2.3 to encourage?
You know, I'm not sure I, I'm not sure I got my arms around Mr. Race's comments. And if, if, you can either summarize it for me or bring it back.
Well, basically, he's saying it's, that the stance should be not just to allow it, but to encourage it. So replacing.
Take a more proactive role.
Yes.
Get, just a more proactive verb, yeah, sure.
But I, I guess the way it read for me was that programs that promote is the same as encouraging, so the verbiage was there.
Thank you, Mr. Race. We, I think we, we understand, thank you.
I'm fine.
I, I'm, I'm good either way, whatever the commission wants.
I think being more proactive is, is consistent with the goals that are, we're going to lay the reader about.
So should we encourage it? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Very good. So I think we're moving on to timber resources. Comments on the goal? I don't have any.
So, we got documentation from Sierra Pacific Industries.
Wait a minute, where am I? Oh, there I am, sorry.
And they added recognizing the jobs. Do we want to add that in there?
I don't know, to me, that's sort of the part of the economic benefit.
I, I took economic benefit as including jobs, as a matter of course.
That was the intent.
Okay. So we're good with the goal?
Yes.
Okay. Actually, Peter, maybe because of, I forgot, Mr., hold on.
Dwight?
Dwight. Dwight, his comments about, you know, redundancy and which act is what, and, I mean, can you provide a, I mean, is it important to list previous acts or just the, the recent one, or?
I, I don't know how important it is. The language that was in here before was actually a language that I had gotten from the agriculture coalition. If there's, you know, I have a problem with revising it to reference the Forest Legacy Program, you know, or other, you know, state and federal programs, if you just want to be more, more generic, so that if there's a new law that is passed, you know, two years from now, you know, we're not inconsistent with whatever state or federal laws there are. The more general question is, are these policies necessary if we're required to participate them, with them anyway? Probably not, other than to sort of state our position, is that we think these are important programs that the state offers, and we intend to continue to use them. You know, does it really matter in the overall, long-term picture of, you know, our timber industry? Probably not. You know, I, I wasn't aware that the county has no option on this, just because I'm not that familiar with the details of these. So whether we just delete those two policies, or we keep them in as just sort of a statement of support, is really up to you. And maybe Cedric can enlighten us a little more of the rationale for that.
I think if they are not optional, and they are required by state law, it is a bit misleading to say we're going to continue to participate, which suggests that we have a choice not to continue to participate. So to me, the question is, are they optional or not? Maybe somebody in the public can tell us.
Well, maybe at this point, we'd ask Mr.
Dwight.
Dwight, I'm so sorry. Since we're, you know, this is, this is based upon your letter, if you could come up and provide some background clarification for us?
Cedric Dwight, Sierra Pacific Industries. I'm a registered professional forester. Do you want me to go top to bottom on this? That would make it smoother for me with respect to my comments. Since I do have comments relative to the goal and the use of the English language in a vague sense, I mean, I don't mind in other portions of the general plan, but as it pertains to timber, I prefer more clarity than, than vagueness, particularly as it applies to a general plan that has a life that goes beyond this board, beyond this planning director, goes, you know, decades potentially into the future.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead and provide your comments.
Okay.
Mr. Dwight has a, a time constraint, you allow him to address the programs now?
Sure. Yes, why don't you just go ahead and give us the overview?
Okay, swell. Okay, the intent of my comments really was to create clarity and also bring the attention of this commission, inefficiencies that might be integrated into the, the policies as written currently, that might cause the, the counties to undertake, you know, programs that they weren't willing or didn't know they were signing up for, the way that, the policies are written currently. So under the, just, I mean, indulge me on the, on the goal, I guess. When I read that, I struggle with that, just maybe it was because I've raised kids recently, and if I asked my son or my daughter for a response relative to timber resources, and they responded, long-term viability of timberlands and timber resources when the county recognizing their economic, aesthetic, cultural, and other values, I would go, huh? Just from a goal perspective. I just, I think that the idea of emphasizing the economic viability is really important, because there's groups that believe that just broadcast burning forests currently to correct, you know, forest health is a viable alternative to sound forest management. So I'd, I'd prefer a little more focus in terms of what we mean by viable, from, from a county's perspective. And so protecting the long-term economic, economic viability, I think, is, is an important addition. And I think recognizing jobs is part of that, because people sometimes get lost on the fact that, you know, that's a primary, it's a primary producer, and that does create jobs. The, the additional economic is redundant, you could strike that. With respect to issue number, well, issue two and three is both policy 3.1 and 3.2, and I just reorganized them so that there wasn't redundancy and, and the, the citation of the, the state laws were accurate, or maybe more clear. The, the original act that caused, compelled counties to create the timber production zone, originally the timber preserve zone was the Forest Taxation Reform Act in 1976. It changed the way forest land was taxed from an ad valorem basis to a yield tax on the standing timber. The preserve in that zone was to preserve growing stock, because historically, there was a caveat in the Constitution, 12 and 3/4, that allowed, wow, I'm going to go long, that allowed a landowner who cut 70% or more of the standing volume on their property to take their, their property off the tax rolls for 40 years. That's a real disincentive for growing trees in the long term. So this, the changing from the ad valorem system to the yield tax allowed people to carry their timber for a longer duration, and then the taxation would occur when the tree is severed from the stump on a commercial basis. So that was the original rule, and it required counties to enroll lands that had the highest and best use, that were identified with an assessor, into this zoning district. And there was a drop dead date in 1979 where that had to occur. Subsequent to that, the Timber Productivity Act essentially subsumed the, it's, it falls under the same 51110 of the government code. The Timber Productivity Act provided a little bit more intent, language at the beginning. It identified some compatible uses. It's mirrored after the Williamson Act with respect to compatibility and things like that nature. So referring to both of them, while it would point the reader to maybe the history of the two acts, I don't know that it's got a lot of utility in policy. So I would suggest, just referring to the California Timberland Productivity Act. In the first policy, I essentially cut out reference to the, my, my edits were provided just for ease, right? Because essentially, you need an end product to run with. So I took the, the liberty of including edits. So I cut out the reference to the Timber Productivity Act in this particular element, added for clarity what long-term conservation forest, conservation programs are available currently. There may be others in the future, but those are the three I'm aware of.
You are on 3.1 right now, correct?
Yes, issue number two, front of my letter.
Down at the bottom of your first page.
Yes.
That's your suggested new language.
Yes.
I understand.
Okay.
But let me, let me suggest that, consistent with your, your suggested change on 3.2, would you not want to add the phrase as required by state law as you do in 3.2? Would that?
I, I cut out, there's no requirement to enroll in, in the long-term conservation programs such as the Cal Fire Forest Legacy Program or the USDA Forest Legacy Program. If you read that, there is no.
But it, but there is the requirement for timber, the Act of 82. So if it followed that, only. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't pull in these other, these other programs.
Three, yeah, 3.1 essentially deletes the first, most of the first, well, most of the, yeah, I guess there's only one sentence there, most of the sentence relating to the timber product, the Timberland Productivity Act. But I include it in 3.2 because I think it's, from an informational perspective, it allows the reader to understand that it is in place. The decision had been made prior to, you know, to identify those lands, and it is, and those lands are significant to the state. So as a informational policy in 3.2, it makes sense. But I didn't include an implementation measure for that because it wasn't required. More questions? Do you follow me?
Keep going.
Okay. The next resource production policy that I had an issue was, was the, the statement that harvesting timber shall be done in a manner that protects water quality, controls erosion and flooding, and maintains the scenic quality of the county consistent with the California Forest Practice Rules. And then there's this notation that seemed to suggest that, wow, we have to have that policy just to empower the, the county to comment on forest practice rules and somehow be engaged in forest practice, you know, implementation. The California Forest Practice Rules are what governs timber harvesting in California on a commercial basis. And on, on timber production zone lands, which, if you enroll in timber production, you have the state protection with respect to right to farm. And it says under government code 51102B, that if you're, that if you're harvesting timber under the Forest Practice Rules, and if it's found compatible, those actions shall not be become, shall not become restricted or prohibited due to any land use in and or around the locality of those operations. or prohibited due to any land use in and around the locality of those operations. And that means that, so a timber harvest review by the county would be kind of extraneous. Our lands in Calaveras County are all timber production zone lands that I'm aware of. So, I just, I'm not sure, I want to point that out, because if you have a policy like this, in the future, maybe not in the five years, but maybe in 10 years, somebody says, hey, you have a policy, are you ensuring that these things are being done? And once you say, once that question's asked, and you are compelled to follow this policy, you're gonna need to hire a registered professional forester, because in the state of California, to weigh in on forest practices issues, you have to be licensed to practice forestry. So then the county will be hiring either a consultant or a forester, and then you're in the business of forest practices, which is redundant. We have the State Water Quality Board, we have Fish and Wildlife folks, we have the licensed foresters under CAL FIRE, we have the Department of Conservation, Geology, Geological Services, all protecting natural resources and things like that. And all this doesn't, doesn't prevent the county from reviewing and commenting on any THP, but the policy, you know, requires it. So I would just, I guess I'm here to warn you that when you have a policy in your general plan that suggests this, someone's gonna point, point to it and say, and demand that it gets implemented. It's a policy. So, needed to point that out. Some counties might embrace it, I don't know.
What you're saying, the unintended consequences is, we're in the forestry business by virtue of having to hire this person to have input on something we don't otherwise have any control over anyway.
Yeah, but, but I must say, though, if the county does raise issues with particular timber harvest plans, the public agencies that review timber harvest plans are very sensitive to county, you know, comments, as well as the pipeline. I mean, that's one of the tensions in trying to manage timberland in California, is you've got, you know, four regulatory agencies looking in on the timber harvest plans, and all those folks, you know, want to look out for the public and the interests of the public, and so there's, there's a great deal oversight that goes on, and we're certainly sensitive to it, too. So, I think that, I don't think the, I don't think it's broke, you know, so I don't think there needs to be a fix or additional regulation to create a fix that I don't think is even part of the problem. There is a problem. Let's see here. I structured implementation 3A to change from referencing the county code, which kind of struck me as just kind of a reminder note to make sure that the timber production zone is compatible with the Timberland Productivity Act. I mean, there's a lot of things that are in zoning and this process that has to be consistent with state law, and I don't think you have policies that highlight each and every one of those. So, I would remove that and then focus, and then reword it by focusing on the forest conservation programs, you know, to remind the agricultural commissioner that those programs are out there, and so he's schooled in how to help out landowners. Like the California Forest Improvement Program provides seedlings at a discount to landowners for replanting. So that could be a real important program to be letting folks know that is available when they're, you know, that have been hurt by fire.
Do you use zone and district interchangeably, or there's two different means?
Zone district, yeah, I probably do.
That, that could be... That was a little confusing to me.
Yeah, there's zone, yeah, zones or districts, yeah, there's zone districts. I should be saying zone district every time, but I don't. So I'll say zone, and then I'll say zone district, or heaven forbid I say district. And then the, again, issue six is sort of like the implementation measure, that, essentially saying that you're gonna review all the THPs in a mandatory fashion, and that's, that could be an interesting use of county funds. I'm not sure you want to do that or not, considering the state oversight. And then the last one was, I think I picked it up out of, it's RP 6, I picked it up out of the, I'm not even sure it's in the timber section, but it's, again, goes back to that specificity. I think that you should say what you mean, you know, are you protecting an economic, the economic viability of it, or are we gonna just argue about what viable is? I mean, some people think it's viable to not have a job. So, those are my comments. If you have any questions, fire away.
I do have, I want to ask a specific question, and Peter, we may have to look a little bit further into this before, the THPs on private lands within subdivisions, you referenced CAL FIRE requires the county to overlook that. I know that the foresters that take the trees, bark beetle trees, or cutting down trees to build a house in the subdivisions, have to get assessors' maps, come down to the county, they have to pay a permit fee to be able to cut down those trees. So, and I know that state law governs the THPs, but they are required to file with our county before they can remove those trees and pay permit fees. So if we mess with this ordinance, which I really hope it's just all state law, we've looked into it before in our area and didn't understand why the county could have the timber harvest plans reviewed and charge permit fees for removing those trees. So we have a little bit of a conflict with what you're saying and what our county policy currently is. So I think before we make any major massive adjustments to there, because I would delete all of it personally, we need to look into that. You need to find out what our county is requiring of the THPs, because those foresters up in our area do have to get a permit through the county. They come in my office and I provide them assessors' maps so that they can go out there and identify the property and come to the county, so I know they're doing it.
What county department did they come to? Because I'm not aware of any permit requirement for tree removal.
Let me tell you in about two seconds, because...
I know there is a conversion exemption that's different from a timber harvest plan. If you're converting timberland to, I think it's less than three acres, I believe.
This is on the third acre lots. If they're gonna cut down and remove any trees on their licensing through the state, when they cut down those trees, if they're going to remove them in 10-foot lengths and take them to the logging mill, they have to have that permit to do that before, and they do it through CAL FIRE in our county. If they're going to not sell it or remove it from the property, they don't have to go through that process, but the minute they're gonna sell those logs, they have to do that. I'll find out which department.
There is a, they would have to comply with a conversion permit, and there's an exemption from conversion for a less than three-acre change in use. So it's sort of a weird application for a residential lot, but you do need to have some paperwork from CAL FIRE, and it's usually a less than three-acre exemption. And on that, it does have a certification box that you have to check that says that you've checked with the county, and the county doesn't have a specific rule or ordinance related to the removal of those trees as part of the three-acre exemption. So, some counties have that, some counties don't. For instance, I just did one in Shasta County, and they don't have a, an ordinance that requires any additional permitting. You may, I'm not aware of, I've never done one in this county.
You stated, you stated in your paperwork here that CAL FIRE, where is it? This has been a big issue up in our area for some time. You stated in here something about CAL FIRE requires that, or was that? Okay, so, this is accurate, however, the county is asked by CAL FIRE to review, review the THPs on RP 3.5, issue number four?
That's, that's county staff talk.
That's my note.
That's your note?
Yeah. That was my note, that, you know, this issue has come up with whether or not this policy is necessary or desirable.
Well, it depends on what the county's requiring of our private harvesters on private lots right now.
The county does not require anything, certainly not the planning department. There's no ordinance I'm aware of that we regulate the removal of trees.
They have to get a permit and come down to the county. These guys all come in, they get an assessor's map for me to come down here and do that. I am trying to get an answer here.
You would have an assessor's partial map when you submit your less than three-acre conversion to CAL FIRE, just to let them know where you're located at.
Yeah, I think they have to go to CAL FIRE, but not the county.
But, I don't know what's up with the county.
Never seen one.
Maybe they're coming to the wrong place, and eventually they get to the right place, but as far as you know, they came to the county.
It, yeah, and that's the only, that's the only box that's, I hadn't done a three-acre, less than three-acre conversion up until a few weeks ago, and that was the only time I'd seen that box, that checked, checked to see what the county has got on their books for three, less than three-acre conversions. Less than three-acre conversions tend to be, have been in the recent past, controversial because they occur generally in residential areas, and people have this, you know, if someone in a small residential area cuts all their trees down, then people freak out.
They're having to do it for the bark beetle trees.
And lots of times, they'll be in a different zone than timber production, and counties may have a different sort of, you know, ordinance that controls removal of the trees.
Trying to find out.
But that box is there for the forester to make sure that they check and close that loop, because three-acre conversions have been controversial in the past.
And the fee is $500?
But there's no requirement for timber harvest plans for county review of timber harvest plans. A three exemption is different, it's an exemption from conversion, conversion of timberlands to a different use.
I'm being told they're gonna find out which department, but the fee that the guys are paying is $500 to the county.
Building Department?
No.
No?
Thank you, if we have other questions, we'll ask you back up. Thank you.
Let's take a lunch break and find out.
Shall we, you want to take a break now? Okay.
Is Mr. Dwight available after lunch? Are you available after lunch?
I am.
Okay, so we are going to recess for a fact-finding lunch mission, and we will reconvene at 1:00. And just for your information, we will be recessing around 3:30 today, depending upon where we're at, but just to set your expectations, we'll be leaving the building then.
On three-acre conversions.
So we are in recess, thank you.